We'll start with the invocation if you could all please stand with me. Father, we thank you for allowing us the health to be here today. Each of these meetings is important for the students and for those that we serve in this community. We thank you for the opportunity that that gives each and every one of us. And I ask that you, in this new year, give us the wisdom and the insight and give us direction from you as to what's best for St. Petersburg College and what's best for those that attend our classes. We ask for success in this new year. We ask for passion from our leaders, that they can feel fulfilled in this role that you've placed them in. And I ask that as our students go from here into this community, you would help them to become successful in their future careers and with their families. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Do we want to make this speaker first?
No.
We're going to start this morning with some recognitions. And first, we have presentation of retirement resolutions. And I'd like to invite up David Brumfield, if he's here, to come to the front, please.
Are you by yourself today?
No, I'm walking away.
Get on up here.
Whereas David Brumfield became a crime scene trainer for the College of Public Safety, Southeastern Public Safety Institute in 1997, conducting training in his field throughout the United States on behalf of St. Petersburg College. And whereas Mr. Brumfield was the author of the statewide curriculum for the Crime Scene Technology AS degree in 2000, became the state's first crime scene technology professor. Over the years, he has continued to work with professional organizations to enhance the academic program and improve the skills and experiences of our students. And whereas Mr. Brumfield is known as a dedicated instructor, always willing to give his best to his students and the college, he created a practical skills program assessment used by many agencies as a hiring requirement and is committed to ensuring that every student can perform to industry standards. And whereas Mr. Brumfield created an education ecosystem that links students to professionals to promote skill building and enhance the student experience. His ability to foster these relationships has led to the employment of many of our students in the Tampa Bay region and beyond. Now therefore, be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by David Brumfield and extend to him our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, on this 15th day of January 2019. David Brumfield.
Next, I'd like to invite up Ms. Joanne Duncan.
Whereas Joanne Duncan came to St. Petersburg College in 1978 to work as a custodian on the St. Petersburg Gibbs campus. And whereas Ms. Duncan proved to be a dependable and competent worker and was soon promoted to the position of workload control clerk. And whereas Ms. Duncan left the college in 1981 to work with her husband in his landscaping business, but returned to St. Petersburg College campus in 1993 where she worked as a custodian and a property and inventory clerk. Most recently, she worked as a materials management assistant on the Seminole campus. And whereas Ms. Duncan also always provided courteous customer service, she has high standards and a strong work ethic that has proudly served St. Petersburg College with distinction over the years. Now therefore, be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Joanne Duncan and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, on this 15th day of January. So proud of you. Thank you so much. It's been a wonderful journey.
And finally, we'd like to invite up Richard Flora this morning.
Whereas Dr. Richard Flora came to St. Petersburg College in 2005 as the first full-time faculty member in the veterinary technology bachelor's degree program. He became dean of the veterinary technology in 2006. And whereas Dr. Flora served in the capacity, in that capacity, until 2018 when he accepted the position of dean of clinical health sciences and veterinary nursing. With that role, he added dental hygiene, emergency medical services, funeral services, orthotics and prosthetics, physical therapy assistance, radiography, and respiratory care to the programs he administered. Whereas, Dr. Flora has been an advocate for the professional stature of veterinary nurses throughout his career. He was instrumental in St. Petersburg College's adoption of a name change from the School of Veterinary Technology to the College of Veterinary Nursing, a title that more accurately reflects the medical knowledge, skills, and capabilities of veterinary technicians and technologists. Under his leadership, our College of Veterinary Nursing continues to be recognized as one of the premier programs in the United States. And whereas Dr. Flora is a highly respected leader, colleague, mentor, and friend to many, he will be missed. Now therefore, be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Dr. Richard Flora and extend to him our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, on this 15th day of January 2019. Dr. Flora.
First, I'd like to thank my beautiful, wonderful wife for almost 47 years of amazing adventures of being together and looking forward to the adventures that lie ahead. I'd like to thank Dr. Williams and Dr. Cooper and Dr. Furlong and the board for allowing me this opportunity to be a part of the St. Petersburg College family. I'd like to thank the deans. They know how I feel. I'd like to thank everybody that's up here and all the instructors that are preparing to go into their classes or in their classes right now and all the staff assistants that make sure our programs work the way they should. And I'd like to thank God for the great blessing you have all been in my life. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Flora, and for all three who were here today who have served this institution for so many years. It's one of the beautiful things, I think, about St. Petersburg College, three completely different roles with three people with completely different backgrounds, all who have given many years to helping us go further as a school. So, thank you all. Next, it's my privilege to welcome to the podium Representative Chris Sprouse. Chris is, of course, the representative for House District 65, which we are currently sitting in here in Tarpon Springs. Chris is actually raised in Tarpon Springs. From three years old, Chris, is that right? He's a great advocate of St. Petersburg College as well as education in general for Pinellas County and North Pinellas County in particular. Also been a fantastic advocate for our veterans here, Chris. And I understand you have some things coming down the pipeline with criminal justice reform in the next year or so. And finally, Chris is poised to be the next Speaker of the House, beginning in 2020. So, we are lucky to have him here. We're privileged to have him here. Chris, welcome.
Well, thank you so much for having me this morning and for inviting me. And welcome to the best House district in all of Florida. We're glad that you're here. You know, as Chair Stonecifer had mentioned, you know, I grew up here since I was three years old. And I was probably maybe, you know, six or seven, maybe eight years old. And my mom, both my parents worked, and my mom needed a place for me during summer camp because we all know, all of us who have kids, during the summer is a really difficult time. And she found a summer camp right here at St. Pete College when I was about seven or eight years old. And out in this field, which I think this was a big field at the time, we came out here and we kind of, we did the rockets, you know, with the engines and you paint them. I think mine was like a yellow jacket. And, you know, I was so excited for like weeks we worked on this thing and put in the, you know, putting the parachute in the yellow jacket and affixing the engine to it. And then finally, like the big day came where we got to come out here to the field and we got to light those rockets and see them kind of go up in the sky. And it's indicative of kind of, at the time, I wouldn't have put the pieces together, right? But of understanding, discovery, of really putting those fundamental building blocks, what President Williams likes to call the education ecosystem, right? It first starts with the ability to want to know something. How does something work? How do you put it together? What happens when you see it fly? And all of that, for me, started here at St. Pete College. I'd be remiss if I didn't say one other thing that was kind of personal, because I think she was still here. Dean DeMers is here, so I'm going to kind of give her a hard time a little bit. When I was at Stetson Law School, we had a trial team that I was part of. So, learning how to advocate and conduct yourself in court. And they said, hey, we have good news for you. We have new coaches for the trial team this year. We have Judge DeMers and Dean DeMers who are going to be your instructors. Now, what they didn't like, what they didn't tell us was that they liked to practice over Christmas break. So, they were pretty hardcore practicers. But one day, I was giving a closing argument, and in the jury box was Justine DeMers. So, I'm giving the closing argument to her. And finally, she said, stop. Why are you moving your hands this way? And I said, well, I don't know. I just kind of, my parents are Italian, they're from New York, that's just kind of how I talk. And she says, your movements need to be purposeful. We need to work on that. I said, okay, well, what do you want me to do? She's like, I have an idea. Her idea was to tie a rope around my hands. And I had to give my closing argument with my hands down to my side. So, next time those of you who are giving a speech or talking in class, try to do it with your hands next to your side without moving them. It's a vulnerable feeling. But even as late as last week, I was giving a speech up in Tallahassee and I thought about moving across the stage and I thought to myself, is this a purposeful movement? So, thank you, Dean DeMers. We appreciate you. We're in exciting times in Tallahassee. President Williams was up with us last week. We had a busy, busy week. A lot of it was kind of pomp and circumstance. I was grateful when we got to Wednesday, when we got to start getting back to normal course of work. But I think vision is important. And I think the governor-elect, now the governor, DeSantis, laid out a vision. President Williams and I were in a room where we were, I was on a panel with a few other legislators and we talked about workforce. One of the three main questions that came up is how do we tackle workforce in this highly competitive global marketplace? And I got to give a shout out to President Williams in front of the new governor and in front of the cabinet, in front of the many legislators who were there, because I think that she and you, by extension, have the right vision as to how to take the college and to fill our workforce needs in this competitive global marketplace. And the example that I gave them was that how this is a, we talk about this as very general terms, right? We're growing rapidly. By 2030, these are the numbers. How do we get people into the global market? What we don't realize is that a lot of the times, that's a very much a boots-on-the-ground exercise. And President Williams and I, just a few months ago, went and sat down with a company, a large company here in Palm Harbor that's continuing to grow, because they had mentioned in a meeting with me that, hey, we have all these empty cubicles and we'd love to fill them, but we just don't have the folks who are getting the right stuff. We don't need a college education, we need a certificate, but it needs to be geared towards what's good for us. And President Williams and I and her team, her staff, and Jackie and others came over to that and we had a kind of a roundtable discussion as to how do we fill those needs. And it's those meetings in the tens and the dozens and the hundreds that are going to get us to the point to fill that market. And you all, as the Board of Trustees here at St. Pete College and the faculty and staff, you truly understand that that is your mission, that that is your goal. And we talked about how in a lot of ways, how much more exciting that mission is than maybe some of your brothers and sisters in higher education, because to a certain degree, you get closer to instant gratification. It's closer to lighting the fuse on that rocket and seeing it go up when you get to give somebody a certificate who's now able to enter that marketplace. So, we couldn't be more excited. Last time I met with Katie Cole, who I know couldn't make it here this morning yet, but I gave her this book, and I'm happy to get it for you, and it's called The End of Average. And I talked about it a little bit during our conversation. But it really talks about what you're doing. It talks about how the education market is changing, how companies like Google and the folks who are dominating the innovation space are no longer really looking towards, you know, they're not focused on whether or not you have a four-year degree. They're focused on whether or not you are the most talented person to do the job and whether or not you have the specific skills geared toward doing that job. The market's changing. And the legislature, I think, is poised, with the comments from Speaker Leva and Senator Galvano, to realize that one of our greatest assets in that fight to make sure that we are competitive both nationally and internationally as the 17th largest economy in the world, is that is our state college system. And I told this to President Williams, and I hope I didn't put too much pressure on her, but in meeting with some of her colleagues around the state, I truly believe that we are lucky to have her and that she will be a leader, not just here in Pinellas County and St. Pete College, but with her colleagues throughout the state college system to ensure that they too realize that that is the mission that we are focused with in the future. So, those are the things that we are focused on, the legislature. I am very excited about where we are heading. I think workforce is going to be one of the top priorities that both chambers and the governor agree that we should get done over the next couple of years. And I think we will, and I think it'll be robust, and I'm looking forward to it. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions you may have about any topic.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I don't have a question, but I'd like to thank the Speaker-elect for coming this morning. I really appreciate it. Appreciate your friendship, not only to me but to the college. And secondly, the Thought Leader Luncheon was a very good luncheon, and I thought you all did an excellent job to talk about where we need to go as a state in the future. I will just say this, it is very hard for the rest of everybody in here, it is very hard to be Speaker-elect. It is a tough job. I don't know if people see that and they say, oh, he's powerful, but let me just explain something to you. You not only have to manage the chamber, meaning you have to manage every member in the chamber and the issues as they come up in the legislative process, on the floor, in committee meetings, and so on and so on. But he also has to go across the state, raise money, and continue to get good folks in Tallahassee on a regular basis while still meeting the needs of the constituency here in Pinellas County and other places. So, I want to say thank you to Speaker Sprouse for that and continue to do a good job, and we appreciate all you do. Thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Well, I found out that today was a special day. Is it someone's birthday today?
Yesterday.
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 We're a day behind.
But I did get a new, I have a two-year-old and a three-year-old little boy, and I got to drink coffee out of my new Batman cup. And we were all very excited about that.
Well, we definitely appreciate you. You took my meeting after I met with you just in December. You met with me last week. You've given great pointers. I really appreciate that, and I've had a chance to share that with my colleagues on ideas and ways to move forward. Thank you for your frankness and your openness. I very much value that. And I would like to say happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
And we have something for you.
Yes, before you leave, let me get out from around this. Representative Sprouse, we just want to honor you with this exemplary Leadership Award from St. Petersburg College. We thank you for your dedicated service, for continuing to encourage us here, but also to challenge us as well, which is something we all need. So, we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you for your leadership. Did we get a picture?
And thanks for taking the time today.
Yes.
We will move on to Board comments. I will start, if you all don't mind. I don't have much today. I just want to thank everyone again for the hard work that went into our workshop meeting last month and the presentations and discussion that we had there. I thought it was fruitful, and I look forward to see where we go with that over the next couple of years. I also wanted to say how excited I am about this new semester. You know, it's start of spring semester, start of a new year. Everything seems fresh, everything seems new, and I'm always excited about that process. And I'm looking forward to digging in even more with different things, St. Pete College related throughout the next three to six months. So, thank you all for being here, and we're getting back to work, and I'm excited. Any other comments from Board members this morning?
Do I need that anyway? I always do it wrong. I just wanted to say, remembering back to the interview process, one of the things that I took you to task on was your relationships in Tallahassee. And boy, did you just shut me up. So, I want to say thank you for listening because obviously that's a very important part of what happens next. And it was great to see him here and to hear the things he said. Congratulations.
Any other comments from the Board? Dr. Williams.
All right. I too am excited about this semester. You guys rock. I mean, you've done a great job, and I'm very proud of the work that has been done. We're on day two of this semester, and things are moving right along. So, thank you for your leadership and the hard work that you have done. I cannot wait for the Board to hear the exciting news as to where we are and what's been going on. As mentioned earlier, I spent all of last week in Tallahassee. And at the end of the meeting, I'll share with you some of the new bills and things that are coming out and some of the insight that I gained from that week. Our faculty are moving forward. Titan Trot is on the prowl February 9th, 8 o'clock, I think at Clearwater Campus.
I welcome any challengers this year. I would be running.
All right. After last year, you'll be really ready. We started our MLK Day of Service events. Sunday was a signature project at the Palladium. It was full. It was free, but it was sold out. Everybody came and it went very well. We have 35 projects happening simultaneously in St. Pete on MLK Day and the parade and the breakfast. Our production, You're in Town, is still winning awards. One of the top 10 productions in Tampa Bay by Broadway World, which is a big deal. And so, very proud of that, and folks are still talking about it. And so, that team did a great job at the Clearwater Campus. We hosted the Legislative Delegation at Seminole in December, the end, I think it was the last day of work. We had them there and had an opportunity to stand before them and share our goals and also seek their wisdom and where they're going. And then our charter school for Tarpon has been recommended for a grant for a half a million dollars. We've got one more phase to go through before we know if we got it, but we feel like we got it. So, I'm very proud of that, and that's what has happened since the last time I've seen you guys.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Thank you.
I do not have any public comments in front of me, so we'll move to the review and approval of minutes.
So moved.
I'd like to take both of these at the same time, both the meeting minutes from November 13th and the strategic planning workshop minutes.
My motion includes both of them on our floor.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. So moved. We'll move to monthly reports with Ms. Gardner. Anything for us this month?
Yes. Good morning and happy new year, Mr. Chair, trustees, Dr. Williams. I've placed on your desk a memorandum, which is intended as an update to my December 13th email correspondence, and this is regarding the filing of a certification petition for union representation of the college's adjunct faculty, and that was filed with the State Commission. As you may remember, we were one of seven state colleges that were recently served with notice of a petition that was filed by SEIU, a union. So, since then, several steps have been taken. And Mr. Mark Levitt, our labor attorney, has made a notice of appearance with the Commission. We have also filed our position with the Commission concerning our institutional response for the grouping or unit for certification. And we've also asked for an administrative review of the petition itself for sufficiency. Also, this last week, Dr. Cooper sent out an informational email to over 800 of our adjunct faculty and the chairs, just saying and assuring them that we will provide accurate information. And also, just asking them just to consider the benefits, costs, pros and cons of the union effort. So, as it moves along, we'll keep you posted. There's any questions, you can just please let me know.
Any questions now from any of the Board?
Mr. Chair, I have the same comment that I had when Dr. Law was president. I'm asking openly that the members of our staff who are faculty that are looking to unionize, please come before the Board. I'd like to hear what are the major points and why you would want to unionize. Because this is my third plea asking for this, and nobody has yet to come forward. So, I can't support a union effort or trying to unionize when I don't know what issues are. You haven't given this Board an opportunity to deal with the issues at hand. So, whatever they may be, you haven't given us the opportunity to hear it, know why, what's going on, anything. We may very well agree with you at the end of the day, but we don't know that. So, please, whoever is heading the effort or thinks that we need to have a union, please come before the Board. I'm making another plea that we have you come before the Board and just let us know why.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Gibbons, and I think we all echo that here on the Board.
We definitely do.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner.
Thank you.
We'll move to student success and academic achievement next. Dr. Renard, if you could please come up to the podium.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the Board, President Williams, good morning.
Morning.
If great morning was a standard greeting, I would say great morning to you because it truly is a great morning at St. Petersburg College. I have the privilege this morning of sharing where our spring enrollment is. As has already been mentioned, classes began yesterday. Before I talk about spring enrollment, I just want to share a couple of positive outcomes from fall enrollment. You see here that our budgeted student semester hours for fall was 234, 175. We actually exceeded that at the end of the term by 2.4 percent.
Great.
Okay? The bottom chart there shows new student headcount. We, at the beginning of the term, we had a year-over-year deficit of minus 6.7. Throughout the term, we grew our new student enrollment and we ended the year, or ended the term, rather, with a deficit of minus 3.4 percent. We gained 343 new students throughout the term. This was all a very intense effort on the college. We improved with the help of marketing and online learning services. The class search tool made it very prominent on the website. We met weekly or bi-weekly to focus on enrollment and understand what courses the students need, opened up more of those sections. So, it truly was a college-wide effort to get us to this point. So, we finished strong with fall and we started strong in spring. I'm sharing this slide. This is something new that we tried this holiday break, if you will, and kudos to the deans and the faculty. This was their idea. We had a winter session that began December 10th and ended January 11th, just Friday. There were 12 sections of courses that were offered out of 401 available seats. Out of 401 available seats, we filled 368 of those, which added 1,100 SSH to our spring enrollment and we had a 75.5% success rate. So, thank you to the faculty who agreed to teach over the holiday break. Big sacrifice there. I know they did a lot of prep work with their students to get them ready for that very rigorous winter session. All right, now we'll focus on where we are for spring. It's my pleasure to let you know that we are up in both headcount and in student semester hours as of opening day. The last time that we were able to come before the board and share that good news was four years ago, spring of 2015. So, it's been a long time coming.
Wow.
But again, it reflects the college-wide effort from student affairs, academic affairs, business services, marketing. Everybody was really focused on getting these numbers where they are. And we won't stop. We're going to continue to look at our enrollment for spring and we'll do that throughout the spring term. We'll focus on Express, which is our 12-week session that starts in February, and then eight-week two, trying to get more and more students in those shorter sessions. Pause, there any questions?
Congratulations.
Fantastic, yeah.
Okay, this slide looks at student semester hours by lower division and upper division. So, the gains were both lower division and upper division you see there. Last time we reported, upper division was down, which is, doesn't always happen. It's kind of rare that upper division is down, so we're good to see that we've turned that This shows baccalaureate student semester hours by program, whether they were up or down. Off to the right, you see in parentheses, the actual student semester hours this term, just to give you some context. So, a lot of the larger programs are up, which is carrying the overall increase of 2.4%. We look at enrollment type. We have three different types of students in this picture. So, continuing student is a student who's been enrolled in one of the last three semesters. A new student is brand-new to SPC this term. And a readmit is someone who's coming back to us after having a year or more of non-attendance. So, almost flat with continuing, slight increase of 2.2% with new, and we fought for every one of those students. And over 200, almost 200 new, excuse me, almost 200 readmitted students, 12.2%. As we reported at the board workshop last month, one of our recruitment goals, three-year strategic metric, is to increase our new student population by 3.5% by the year 2020, 2021, to get us to 9718, using the 2017-18 as the baseline. So, we can only project where we're going to end in the 2018 year. We know where fall landed. We project spring and summer. So, we estimate that we'll be right around 9,500, well on our way towards the 9718. We look at ethnicity. This is overall headcount. Our African-American students is up 0.7%, Asian students down 0.3, which is really only three students. Hispanic students is up 7%. As you know, we've reported growth with this group for a number of years. I was surprised when I looked at this that the campus with the highest growth year-over-year was St. Petersburg Gibbs. We've seen a lot of growth in the Clearwater area. Clearwater and Seminole are still trending up, but when I probed about St. Pete Gibbs, I found out that Hurricane Maria and the students from Puerto Rico is now finally starting to affect us and our enrollment, as well as many Cuban students and their families migrating from Miami to the Tampa Bay area. And white students down 0.7%. Gender, female students up 1.4% and male students is down 0.7%, difference of, I think, 64 students. If we look at enrollment by age, again, this is all students, all categories except the 22 to 25 are up. That category is down 0.4%, difference of 18 students. Enrollment status. So, we saw that our student semester hours was up 1.9% and our headcount was only up 0.9%. That's an indicator that the students that we have are taking more credits. This bears that out. So, full-time students are up 4%. All of the literature about enrollment in higher education points that full-time students are typically going to do better when it comes to retention and completion. So, this is good news. Now, we look at FTIC. So, off to the right, you see the total. We grew FTIC first-time in college students by 14% this spring. You see, this is by ethnicity. So, our African-American students grew by almost 44%. Keep in mind that the ends are relatively small here. Our biggest FTIC group is in fall. So, we had 177 African-American students this spring compared to 123. I think that there's a lot of efforts to recruit more African-American students, especially male students. We're about to have our seventh annual Keys to Manhood Conference in February, so those types of efforts are starting to reap dividends. Hispanic students up 3.2%, white students FTIC up 11.7%. And then, if we look by age, I was a little bit surprised, we saw overall, when we looked at overall students, 1800 was up. They were all up except the 22 to 25. This is showing growth in all areas, but I was a little bit surprised to see our older students, 26 to 35 and 36 and older, growing by as much as they did. So, just to recap, 2.4% actual over-budgeted student semester hours for fall. We doubled our increase of new students from the beginning of the term to the end of term for fall. We added the new winter session, just trying some new things. Up 0.9% in headcount and up 1.9% in student semester hours. Up 2.2% in new students and up 12.2% in readmitted students. Up 4% in full-time students. Up 14% in first-time in college students. Up almost 44% in our African-American FTIC population. And up 7% overall in Hispanic students and up 0.7% overall in African-American students. What questions do you have for me?
These are fantastic numbers. Going back to the FTIC enrollment, which I realize is a small portion, we're talking about 930 students here. What do you think specifically led to the 14% jump? I know you mentioned some of the community outreach that we've been doing. Is there anything else specifically that you think tied to that?
I need to go back and confirm this, but I suspect that, you know how many students take a gap year? I think that I'm going to find that there's many Pinellas County graduates from June that took a gap semester.
Any other questions from the board?
Just one. Obviously, fantastic news. Congratulations overall. Amazing. Good job, everyone in room. I do have a question about why the nursing statistic was down. That surprises me. Is that something that we're typically really strong in?
Right. This is something I think we've seen for a while. I reached out to the acting dean and the BSN is no longer the coveted credential by employers that it used to be. There was a push a couple of years ago that I think BayCare was saying every one of their RNs is going to have to have the BSN, and that's no longer the case. They're more after students with certificates, some kind of a post-RN certificate. Plus, more and more of our sister institutions are now offering the BSN degree.
Any other question?
Yeah. So, what are we, I mean, are we doing anything to address that? Because that's, I mean, all I was hearing for years was, I can't get into the nursing school at SPC and I'm going to Galen or I'm paying at, you know, a for-profit school.
Keep in mind, this is baccalaureate. So, the RN degree, students are still struggling to get into that RN degree because it's so competitive. So, this is the BSN, the baccalaureate.
Only.
Right. This is, yeah, which is much more open than the associate degree. Those are more limited access. And do you, would you like to share what's happening with the BSN?
Sure. So, the BSN, the R and BSN degree has, the past few years, have been down around 5% to 6%. And the primary reason, like you stated, is because hospitals are no longer pushing the bachelor's degree, so, because they decided not to go magnet, especially in Pinellas area, compared to Tampa, but Tampa General still appoints for magnet and Moffett. And magnet statute is that they require all their nurses to have a bachelor's degree, or at least 80% by 2020, which was the IOM report that they were trying to meet. That's no longer the case. So, now what you're pushing are certificates. So, we've been doing certain things to help increase our enrollment. One thing we did last summer, we started giving credits for the certificate that they earned at the hospital. So, I've been in constant contact, I met with the PP, so that information's in HR and the hands of educators, so we could get the word out. Other things, we're going to look at this year, see how we can increase access to really find out and compare us to our sister schools to see what barriers we may have that they don't have to increase access to our program. Because any person of it is online. So, students have a variety of places they could go. I've had, when I was chair, I had students that were in different states working as nurses, taking courses online. So, we're going to continue to look at it so that we can be better off next year than we are this year.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I think, Mr. Foster, that would make this the first meeting you and I have sat in where we've seen an increase in student semester hours and headcount. So, that's, that's pretty exciting. It's good stuff. Thank you, Dr. Renard.
Good job.
Dr. Sabrina Crawford. Good morning.
Yes, good morning. I think I'll stick with Dr. Renard's great morning and happy new year, Chair Stonecifer, members of the board, and Dr. Williams. I'm happy to be here today to talk a little bit about our fall 2018 course success rates. So, to start off with a recap of our course withdrawals, you saw a estimated expectation of our year-over-year in December, and this is the final. So, our course withdrawals have gone down by 10, negative 10.4%, which is an increase from last time, this time last year, which was negative 9.7%. So, when we talk about course success rates, just a reminder, these are all of the grades of receiving A, B, or C, that is divided by all grades overall, including the Ds, Ws, Fs, and Is. And you can see in the chart that the number of grades that we're counting has gone down as our enrollment has gone down. That said, our success rate fall over fall has increased every single semester for the last several. When we compare this with our strategic goal of increasing course, student course success rates by 2%, last December, we mentioned that the 1718 course success rate for the year was 79.2%. This fall, we have a student success rate of 78.5%. When we compare the annual to the fall rates, you can see they're both in an upward trajectory. So, we have an expectation that our success rates for the year, for 2018-19, will also be up, heading us closer to our goal of 80.8%. So, I'm going to show you some really messy slides, but stay with me because they're color-coded and I'm going to talk through the colors. And one of the reasons why I'm sharing all of this information is that we're finally at a point, after 10 years of increasing success rates, we want to focus on more than just reporting what the success rate is. We want to delve deeper into the information and look at closing our achievement gaps for our special populations. So, the graph that's on your left is the one that you've seen every single time that we've talked about success rates. And if I brought that forward to you today, if you look at the blue line, you'll see that everything is positive. We're going up in every area. And I would normally be saying to you, this is awesome. And it is awesome. But if we delve down a little bit deeper and you look at the top line, which is our males, and our bottom yellow line, I think it's maybe yellow or orange for you, our African-American males, when we look at the gap analysis, you'll see that the difference between the success rate of all of our students in these two populations, though getting better by the negative numbers, you'll see it's negative 1.8% for our male students, it's closing that achievement gap. And our African-American males is negative 14.2%, which is better than the prior year, meaning it's closing that achievement gap. You can see that there's still distance, and in some cases, great distance. And so, we really need to be focusing our time in those areas that are the greatest. The other thing I wanted to point out on this slide is when we look at our black African-American students, so this is the middle highlighted line, for last fall and this fall, the success rate was 66.5%. So, I could just tell you, wow, that's fantastic. We haven't lost any ground. It's not horrible that we didn't gain any ground, but when the entire college is increasing and they're staying steady, that means that that gap is getting wider and wider. So, we really do need to start looking at how do we focus in on that group. You're going to see this trend continue in most of the slide decks that I show you. So, when you see this in the future semesters, I'm really going to be zoning in more on the gap analysis than I am on just the overall success rates. So, we look at our FTIC students, again, at the top highlighted line and the bottom highlighted line for our male students and our African-American male students, you'll see that they showed the greatest gains fall over fall. And you can see that their, the gap analysis is also in an upward trend, so it's closing that gap. And the same thing for our black African-American students, that's going down. And you'll also notice that for both our black African-American students and our African-American male students, they have the largest gap. They're double digits, and again, that's where we want to focus our time. The only other thing on this is that our Hispanic students have shown a decrease for the first time in over three semesters fall to fall. So, this is a small one, but it's something that we need to keep our eyes on. So, in the December, we mentioned our three-year strategic metrics that are focused on our success, and those are listed down below. But I wanted to also talk a little bit about some new metrics that we're going to be starting to share during our weekly data meetings. And these have to do with our retention and our learning experience. We've been track, we've developed and will begin tracking for the fall data for our career and academic communities. They've developed both a metric for students, for student service area and for an academic area for each one of the quartiles of a program. So, students who complete the first 25%, the next 25%, et cetera. And we're going to start sharing that information so we can track student progress through their academic programs. In addition, our Learning Resources Center has started to develop some very specific programs that are, that they're going to track usage and also usage by special populations. Our Learning Resources staff has gone through a training on culturally responsive pedagogy and we're going to try to, try to see whether or not any of this is going to have effects. Obviously, we want more students attending the Learning Resource Center, getting what they need and trying to work on that achievement gap. Other information that we've been using in the past, student engagement, we know that students who are engaged are more likely to stay, more likely to have higher success. We'll continue tracking that, as well as our course withdrawals and Spark usage, which is the early alert tool that's attached to our learning management system. In regards to the learning experience, we have two new metrics that we're going to be looking at. The first one has to do with the presence of a syllabi in a, in the online course by the time the class opens and three days prior, so that students can have a heads-up. And we're also going to be tracking feedback that students receive within the gradebook within their learning management system, to make sure that they're getting constant feedback and making progress overall. Okay, so, we've been tracking developmental courses forever, ever since Senate Bill 1720. And if you remember, the last time I was here, I mentioned that the ends, or the number of students that are in those classes, have become so small that it's really become statistically insignificant. We think it's still important to note how students are doing in these courses, and so, I'm showing you here that students in all areas have shown great gains, but again, these numbers are very small. What we do want to focus in on, on the other hand, oh, and I should say that last time this year, our fall 2017 over fall 2016 numbers were all negative. And so, this is the first time that we're showing all positives. And so, that is actually an important thing to note. In regards to our gateway courses, you're going to see the exact same thing that we're seeing for the other two slides. Again, our males and our African-American males showing the highest gains, but the largest achievement gap being focused for our African-Americans and especially our African-American males. And then, of course, we always talk about our flexible placement students. These are the students who came in underneath Senate Bill 1720, who no longer have to go directly into developmental education. And we use our predictive analytic model to determine whether or not we feel they're likely college-ready, whether they're dev ed recommended, or whether they're dev ed strongly recommended. And in previous times, you've seen a slide that was much smaller than this, and it looked at a snapshot in time that really broke out, how are these students doing in regards to all FTIC students? What we've never really looked at is how are they doing fall over fall? So, I wanted to start with that one, and that's the one on the left. And then, I really wanted to focus in on the gap analysis, because if you remember what we showed you during the presentation for Senate Bill 1720, we know that both our Hispanic students and our black African-American male students are the ones that we need to focus on the most, especially those that are in... especially those that are in dev ed strongly recommended categories. So this is our, our review. And I want to start with the yellow, which is our likely college-ready. So these are the students that we feel should be going into the gateway classes automatically. And if you look on the right, you'll see that their success rates are above the FTIC success rates in all categories. So this has been happening for quite a few times. I'm no longer going to share that if we feel a student is likely college-ready and takes a gateway course, that's where they're supposed to be. I don't think we need to focus on, in on them anymore. It is those students that we really thought should have been in developmental education, and we want to look at how they're doing. So if I focus in on the green on the left, you'll see that almost every single one of the green areas is highlighted for developmental education recommended or strongly recommended, meaning that they're showing gains, that we're closing those achievement gaps in all of those areas, except for the developmental education recommended for gateway math. And this is, this is the one place that we had a, a decrease for this year. So that, we're going to be looking into that a little bit more. There's a large percentage of students in that category. So just some noteworthy observations. We mentioned that the course withdrawals has gone down to negative ten point four percent compared to last fall. We know that the student success for the college has increased one point four percent in, in the fall of 2018 with all, increases in all areas. Our student success rates for our FTIC students increased one point four percent with our male and our, sorry, our male and our, with our male students increasing three point three percent. We do know that the success rates for the FTIC students in developmental education showed increases in all areas as opposed to last fall, where there were decreases in all areas. And our FTIC students in gateway courses has increased two point seven percent, which was actually a double the increase from the preceding fall. And our male students having the largest increase of four point six percent. And the most important thing is that we, what we know, which we already knew, is that our African-American and especially our African-American males have the largest achievement gap, and we need to focus our efforts there. In regards to our flex placement students, we were pleased to see that they had increases in success in all areas minus the developmental recommended in gateway math. So this is all well and good, but the question always becomes, so what, right? So I know that you have the review of the strategic priorities. I talked to you a little bit about some of the metrics. There's a couple of things that are specific to both of these areas that I just wanted to highlight. The first one underneath retention, that doesn't, that doesn't have a tracking mechanism right now, is our working on our, our math pathways. So the math pathways are those gateway courses into our programs. And our math department and our faculty members have been working very hard to ensure that the right courses are in the right programs and that the right skills are in the right courses. So we're expecting that when this work is done, that we're going to see an ease of the transition towards completion of math early in their programs, which will set them up for success for the rest of the program. Underneath the learning experience, so this is the group of faculty members. This goes beyond the work that's being done by the deans, that's done by the advisors, that's done by the student services side of the house. This is a group of faculty that are focused in on their learning experience. They're working on developing specific strategies that are going to be focused on, on decreasing that achievement gap, which they'll be bringing forward later this spring. And they're, they're already working and happen for about a year and a half of working on identifying those best practices that are going to help support that init, those initiatives. So the latest one that they did was the culturally responsive pedagogy, which they've shared with all of the, all of the college family in order to take. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the board? I, um, maybe I'm just being a little selfish with how I look at things, but I, I really appreciate the new breakout of some of this information. For me and my Excel spreadsheet mind, this is giving me a better, a more in-depth window into what's going on. A more focused, yet all-encompassing view, so thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Um, I want to, thank you, Trustee Stonecifer. I want to applaud Dr. Crawford. I challenged her and Dr. Cooper to dig deeper on these numbers, to find out, why are we inching up so short? So small inches, small movements. And to fix that, we have to close the achievement gaps. We have to look at those students who are underperforming and figure out ways to help them do better. So while the overall college is doing well, we've got hundreds or thousands of students who are still struggling, who are not meeting that mark. If we're going to do better on performance-based funding and we're going to reach the completion ratios, we are going to have to do exactly what we're talking about, and that is closing those gaps and addressing the, the needs of those students. And so I was very pleased to hear about the culturally responsible training or teaching, hoping that gets into the classrooms where we can engage our students better, respond better. But thank you. I know I asked you to go back a couple of times, I appreciate that, but that part is very important. If we're going to make the big number growth, you've got to, you've got to address, you know, everybody in the group. So, good job.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford. Uh, next we have Ms. Jeanette Hunt with our budget and finance report.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Morning.
Board members, Dr. Williams. I'm actually thankful I have some good news this morning. I didn't know there was a theme of great morning, so. This report is as of December thirty-first, and we'll start with the revenue. So first, looking at our student tuition and fees, we came in at the end of December at forty-eight point six million. I'll talk a little bit more about the student tuition on the next slide and break that out into some categories. Next, in our revenue, you see here in our fund transfers in, last fiscal year, we had transferred in two point five million at this period of the year. This year, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand. It's all based on timing, when the journal entries are actually processed. Since this report, we've transferred in another seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Overall, revenue total is seventy-eight point nine million. This chart you see each month, this is the tuition revenue. Within this chart, there are three types of tuition that we'll talk about on the next slide. But I wanted to add in, usually this chart is, includes the actuals at the end of the period. We've extended it out to January eleventh. The reason for that is because last year, our spring semester started on January eighth. This year, it started on January fourteenth. So there's a week of revenue tuition for spring that's in January this year versus last year in December. So if you look at this chart, you see our budgeted amount for tuition is fifty point, close to fifty point eight million, and we're projecting to be at fifty-one point five million by the end of the year. And that is, goes into tribute to some of the things that Dr. Renard spoke to. So now to break out the three areas of tuition. We have our credit area of tuition, which are the student semester hours that Dr. Renard mentioned earlier. Those are our Composition One, Algebra, Biology-type courses. So when we look at that, the budget for our credit tuition is forty-seven point nine million. You see here our projection at the end of the year for that type of tuition is about forty-eight point nine million. And so right, this one, this is about nine hundred thousand dollars more than what we projected. Next, our PSAV, which is our post-secondary adult vocation tuition. These are some of the things like EMT, FIRE Academy, and our Correction Academy. Over the last two years, we've seen an increase in our revenue for our PSAV courses. In the red, you see the budget amount of six hundred and thirty-four thousand. And right now, we're projecting to be about six hundred and ninety-five thousand in the tuition. Next category is our non-credit. So these are some of our courses, like our workforce courses. There are also our public safety non-credit courses, our continuing education for nursing pro careers. This budget is at two point one million dollars. And you see here, the expected revenue amount is approximately about one point nine. You heard a presentation in November from Andrea Henning, talking about some of the strategies of how to close that gap. We also heard Representative Sprouse this morning, talking about some of the actions that have taken place to try to engage the community and the businesses more. Next, we look at our expenses. So right now, at the end of December, for personnel and benefits, we're at fifty-four point five million dollars, which is a little bit under fifty percent of the year. Current expense at twelve point six, capital eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, for a total operating expense of seventy-eight million. When we take our revenue minus our expenditures, we're a little shy of eleven million dollars. Any questions?
Uh, I just have one. Is there any way we could get information, and I'm not sure who would be best to pull this, of what other colleges in the state of Florida, what percentage of revenue comes from non-credit tuition compared to ours? I'd just be curious to see where we stand, not that it really matters, because we want to be the best at the end of the day at, at that in particular, anyway. But I'd be curious where we stand as a total percentage of our revenue from tuition dollars. How much of that is non-credit compared to some other schools and, and the other colleges in the state of Florida?
Sure, we could gather that information.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move to administrative in our Human Resources Personnel Report. You have it in your packet and have reviewed the report. Do I have a motion to approve? Have a second?
I'll second it.
Do you have a question?
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Foster, you can.
Brian? Maybe this is for you? Maybe not. You and I have had a conversation before. I just, I want to get the most bang for the buck out of travel. And we can send seventeen young people to Canada and two instructors, and for four hundred and sixty-five dollars, we can send somebody to India and it doesn't cost us any money. Spain, five hundred, Israel, zero. And then we're going to send twenty-four people to Spain, and it's going to cost us over four thousand dollars. Why are there not sponsors, grants, or other things to help to mitigate some of that? I'm just, I just watch that every week, and it's gotten better, and now I see a, a big one again. I just, I, it's just a personal thing.
Sure, we, we can, I, I think Catherine is probably in a better position to answer these questions related to international travel, but.
I just called you because you and I have talked about.
We have.
You know I, I nitpick over that.
No, we have. And, and travel overall, college-wide, is something we are monitoring very closely. The VPs and I discuss it. In fact, we just discussed it last week with Jeanette. And, you know, we're watching in-district travel as well as a number of other areas of travel.
And it's gotten better. I haven't.
It has.
I haven't had to gripe.
No.
Until today.
It's a legitimate concern, and I think we can start to look at sponsors for these trips. But let me turn it over to Catherine if I can, and she can speak more specifically to it.
Good morning, Chair.
Morning.
President, board members. Your, your question is a valid question, and we agree with you to the point. It's a three, it's the longest study abroad program that we have. That's why it's our most expensive for our faculty, for their lodging. That's the short answer. The long answer is, we have a meeting this Thursday with EF Tours. Since they have started to facilitate some of our programs, the costs have come down because they can help sponsor other faculty that travel with us. And this trip is on that agenda specifically. So even though it has the highest number of students traveling and is really one of our most successful and one of our longest programs we've had, it's the length of the program that boosts the cost up. But we are doing exactly what you're saying, is looking into, how can we reduce those costs? Because we share your concerns.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you both. I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? So moved, thank you. As we do in most months, I'd like to take the consent agenda as one item. If I have a motion and a second, we can open the floor for any comments or questions from the board.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Uh, you, you all have informational reports in your packets. Before the president's report, Mr. Gibbons, I didn't want you to think that we forgot about you or I forgot about you. I know last month, we mentioned, you brought up something that you may want to put to a vote at this meeting. Are you ready for that today, or would you?
I'm still waiting on information, but I have, I mean, I have talked to several colleges and they're sending me information.
Okay.
But most, most of the colleges, a lot of colleges have individual, uh, committee meetings that board members are actively involved in.
Yeah, when, let's do this, Mr. Gibbons. When you have that information, if you can get it to the president, and then she will get it to us, then we can find the meeting to, to vote and discuss. Thank you. With that, we'll turn it over to Dr. Williams.
I mentioned that last week, I spent the entire week in Tallahassee and found it to be well worth my time. It was great. I got a chance to see Trustee Gibbons at some of the events, the luncheon that Representative Sprouse spoke about. I think he was at that luncheon, I believe, as well as the inauguration itself and the ball. There were thousands of people all over Tallahassee. But the, the good thing, Eric really did a great job getting us into meetings, even last-minute meetings. We got a chance to meet with delegates outside of our area, got a chance to share our, our information, what we're looking for, and gain insight. But there was a meeting that Eric had me attend that was very important to me. It was a joint meeting of the Public Integrity and Ethics, Higher Education Appropriations Subcommittee, and the Higher Ed and Career Readiness Subcommittee. And that meeting lasted for about two hours. And during that meeting, we learned a lot more about construction, what the state is going to be looking for in the future. Regarding construction, there was one particular college that they were deeply looking into, it wasn't us. And then we, we heard more about concerns about the Board of Governors and their audit processes, colleges' fixed capital outlay and what we're doing with that. They looked a lot at our carry-forward balances. There were questions about particular colleges that had a very healthy reserve and what are we doing with that? There was dialogue also about transferring funds from Fund One to Seven, also about direct support organizations and what are the foundations doing to support the colleges and how much money they have in their reserves in support of the college audits and how colleges are doing in audits, and SPC is very great with audits and, and concerns. And then the Board of Governor Inspector General information. So there's a big, thick presentation that was done during that. And many of the presidents who were there ended up having a sub-meeting after that to talk about those types of things and going back and looking at what we're doing in those areas. And then in the Council of Presidents, we got a chance to meet the new Commissioner Corcoran. Very, very helpful, sharing with us his vision and what he's thinking about going forward. But here's some things that the Council of Presidents focused on. A lot about mental health training, career education, and working with the technical colleges, support for the students, our SGA statewide, the Student Government Association. They're fighting for more baccalaureate degrees, so they have submitted information on their own in support of that. Also, the adjunct union and what's happening with all seven of the colleges involved in that, performance-based funding and changing the budget models, a new Perkins Five, and the new insurance increases in the consortium and what those costs are going to be. There's four pending bills. House Bill one eighty-nine is recommending that colleges pay for the learning materials for students to do dual enrollment courses, public charter, wherever that we pay for that. House Bill six oh oh seven, that the concealed carry on campus is back. That was put out. And Senate Bill two thirty-eight stating that if a post-secondary student is charged with sexual misconduct, that that will be noted on their transcript. And then the last one that is sort of pending is the removal of the prohibition for instruction for inmates to be able to get college credits if they have less than twenty-four hours left on their sentence, and that the colleges be added to that. The last thing that we, we spent some time on is talking about the governor's vision and where he's going next. And so SPC is right in line with that vision. So I'm very proud of that. We'll be back in Tallahassee in February, we'll be back in March, and we'll continue moving. We'll be back in Tallahassee in February. We'll be back in March, and we'll continue moving. Today, I'll be speaking at the commissioners' meeting. They're giving me an hour and a half of their time to hear specifically about SPC with our county commissioners. On Wednesday, I'll be speaking Wednesday morning at a Salvation Army meeting. And Friday, I'll be speaking at the hospital. What is? John Hopkins. They'll be giving me about forty minutes of their time at John Hopkins. They're asking to record it for the rest of the hospital. So we're moving, we're out, we're, we're busy, and making sure that SPC is included in that, at the table. So that's kind of what I'll be focusing on for the next week.
Well, it's a good thing you had a few vacation days in there before, before the start of this new year. Thank you, Dr. Williams. That's a great update for us all. And I'm sure many of us on the board will be up in Tallahassee many times between now and the end of March as well. I want to thank Tarpon Springs for hosting us today up in North County at this great campus. It's a pleasure to be here. Our next meeting is February nineteenth at the Allstate Center, so we're back down in St. Petersburg. And with that, we will adjourn. Thank, yes?
Dr. Williams has, you know, kind of prodded me a little bit to reengage in Tallahassee. And, and we had a good meeting today, great reports. I didn't really ask any questions. I soaked it in. But the only thing that still, other than the travel, the only thing that still is just a little disturbing is that achievement gap. And I still am trying to grasp the politics of not requiring a developmental English or math because the data just absolutely speaks for itself. A degree hamstrung, it's a huge disservice for first-time in college. Our kids coming out of high school are not prepared, and the data shows that. So put me down for a Tallahassee trip and just make sure that we're armed with that data because of all the great things, the, the good reports that I saw today and the forecast and the budget, this gap still just crawls all over me. And, and the politics, the way it's being treated, I just think is an abuse to our young people. So, yeah, put me down.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Thank you so much, Chair Foster. I appreciate that. The other thing that the board members, you have is a copy of the employee engagement report. You may have wanted some of the details. We'll be bringing a full report back to you after we complete the campus visits with the employees, but you do have the details that were, that will share with you in December.
Thank you all again. With that, we are adjourned.